Hey, everybody, 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 everybody. Welcome, welcome. Yes, it is Monday, October 23rd, 2023. Welcome to Raging Chickens Out to Coop Live. This is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. On Out to Coop Live, we talk to progressives, activists, and troublemakers of all sorts, right from our own backyards and across the country. And you can join us for the end of the week for our Friday Politics Roundup, where we break down the good, the bad, and the ugly in state and national politics. You can get all our shows by subscribing to our podcasts on Podbean, iTunes, Spotify, wherever you get your podcasts. You can help support this show by becoming a patron for as little as five bucks a month. Head on over to patreon.com/RCPress for all the details. Make it to help out the show right now by heading over to our YouTube channel, if you're not there already. Smash that subscribe button, like the stream for this show, and hit that notification bell so you know every time that we go live. And if you're one of our awesome podcast listeners, make sure to leave us a five-star review on whatever platform you listen on, and leave a comment to let other people know why you like the show. Little things like that to help other people find it. And then guess what? They get to learn about all this cool stuff. It's fantastic. For more PA progressive talk, tune into The Rick Smith Show's livestream at 9:00 PM Eastern. Check him on his YouTube channel, Twitter, Facebook, right across the board. Head on over to therrickssmithshow.com for the latest across all his platforms. And of course, you got to visit the Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast, the amazing PA women stirring the political cauldron behind this podcast. Rock the house. And you know where the bodies are buried. Make sure to follow them on Twitter at @thenightcaucus. That's @thenightcaucus on Twitter. And subscribe to their podcasts on Anchor, Spotify, iTunes, wherever you get your podcasts. I guess we can't call it Anchor anymore since Spotify actually kind of bought whatever. That's a whole nightmare what they did to Anchor. But anyways. And if you haven't heard, The Signal is a new podcast from the Bucks County Beacon. The Signal is hosted by the Bucks Counties, Bucks Counties, by the Beacon's editor-in-chief, Cyril Mikulak, and produced by yours truly. Twice a month, The Signal will shine a light on right-wing extremist currents streaming through Bucks County and beyond. Cyril invites guests who can provide insight, analysis, and organizing solutions that we can steer the community toward calmer, saner, progressive roots. Man, just absolutely fantastic. I just was working on the latest episode of The Signal. Oh, it is a fantastic episode. And it's got me rethinking a lot of things about what I'm going to do in my life. I swear to God, I'm not kidding you. So it was, it served a few purposes, but it's going to be dropped on Wednesday. Do check it out. That's The Signal. And if you haven't heard, or if you missed it, The Beacon has also launched a new Gen Z-focused and hosted podcast called The Civic Circle. They are, the second episode just dropped, and you got to check it out. And it just rocked. You get it all the podcasts. Head on over to buckscountybeacon.podbean.com for the latest. And attention, all you gamers out there. The Game Inn is a Quikertown-based, black-family-owned gaming store. They're friends of the show. They've got everything for retro N64s, the latest consoles, video games for all platforms, collectibles, action figures, Funko Pops, Walls of Funko Pops, and kids can get discounts with A's other report cards. Check them out on their Facebook page and follow them on Twitter at @TheGameIn. That's @TheGameIn on Twitter. Got a question about a game? Look for something hard to get. Shoot me a message or drop them an email at thegamein@gmail.com. Shout-out goes to Jonathan Mann, who wrote our intro song. They're all people in the future. Check out all his great stuff and check him out on his YouTube page and follow him on Twitter at @SongOfDayMan, @SongOfDayMan on Twitter. Well, I'm rushing things a little bit here right now because for those of you who are tuned into our livestream right now, you'll notice that you'll see that the Pen Ridge School Board meeting has just gotten underway. We're going to do a kind of watch party because it's a pretty significant day in the Pen Ridge School District, in part because, as you know, this past week, we talked about this on the show last week, Darren Lawston, who is a parent in the Pen Ridge School District, who you've seen on this show, or you've seen, we talk about him on this show, you've seen some of his stuff on, speaking at the school boards. And he won his lawsuit. He sued the Pen Ridge School Board, the School District, for basically doing some smoke and mirrors to pretend that they were not banning books, when in turn they were banning books in the most backhanded, backroom, smoke and mirrors, shady ways possible. Darren basically uncovered it, and the School District denied it. Basically, what they were doing is they were checking out books on pretending that they were checked out by students, but they weren't checked out by students. And, well, School District denied it all. They did some crazy stuff, went to court. Darren Lawston took them to court, and he won his lawsuit, right? Won his lawsuit. Now the district has to hand over the materials. And the judge basically reprimanded the school board for all what it was doing, reprimanded the school board for its lies, its deceit, and its flouting of the Open Records Act. It was pretty kind of impressive. So tonight is the first day that the school board is meeting, as a whole meeting, since that, the results of that lawsuit were announced. So what I thought we'd do a little bit, care, initially, we had a different show planned for this evening. Some of the scheduling didn't work out, kind of last minute. It was hit or miss about whether it was going to go. I thought we were going to have a different show. But then I thought, you know what? Great article the Bucks County Beacon dropped today about Darren Lawston's lawsuit. And I thought, what a better way to spend the evening, especially since the school board is going on, which I almost wish they was there. I know a lot of people are kind of like, oh, my God, we've got the school board meeting. And that's at the same night that the Phillies, of course, are playing in the National League Championships. Looks like the YouTube, the Pen Ridge School Board YouTube was glitching a little bit. Not so sure. But what I'm going to do is, you can see right now, they're just moving to public comment and for tonight's school board meeting. And now, again, this is kind of a live watch party, but as you can see, I just paused it, which means that there's going to be a little bit delay. If you're there live, it's not going to be corresponding. But if you're tuning in with me, you're not watching alive anyways, right? So you're going to watch it here. So what I thought we'd do is listen to some of the commentary, listen to a little bit about what the response is going to be. And then when we get some breaks, I want to kind of treat you to the Bucks County Beacon article about Darren Lawston's successful lawsuit and some of the shenanigans that are going on in the Pen Ridge School Board. So I believe, if I'm correct, this is Kevin Foster is our first speaker up tonight. So let me go ahead and unmute this and see if we can hear what Kevin's got to say. This is Kevin Foster, first public comment tonight's Pen Ridge School Board meeting. You see, he's getting ready. So you're going to hear my little commentary here and there. I'm going to try to make sure.
Kevin Foster, Hilltown Township.
Here we go.
Tonight, the Pen Ridge School Board isn't focused on our students or our taxpayers. They're not focused on our academic results or the wave after wave of resignations of teachers, staff, and administration. The board's sole focus and sole focus only is politics. The board and their political allies have a political agenda completely aligned to national talking points intended to create fear and divide our community. Pen Ridge is in crisis. The teachers and staff are leaving Pen Ridge at a rate three times the Pennsylvania state average. On the agenda tonight is another wave of resignations. My children's school, Grass Elementary, is losing teaching assistants and our wonderful and well-respected guidance counselor after losing multiple teachers over the summer. Over 10 resignations in October across Pen Ridge tonight, more than double than what we had in October of 2022.
It's been a big problem.
Also tonight, the board is writing another check to our high-priced Harrisburg law firm for $140,000, bringing their two-month total to $300,000. In the 2021-2022 school year, the district spent $240,000 for the entire year. The budget for legal fees for this school year is 440 grand. In one more month, they will have blown the entire budget for the year. Where will they get the extra money to pay Mr. Miller and Edward Siemens? They'll take money from budgets aligned to our classrooms, to our bus drivers, or to our support staff.
Exactly.
They'll take money that is meant for our children to pay their attorneys. Also tonight, the board will pass a policy that doesn't address any existing problems in Pen Ridge. What it does address is politics and politics only. Tonight, you'll hear speakers come up and thank the board for the passage of this policy, because that is their closing message for the election on November 7. It's the only message they have. They have no vision, no plan, just fear-mongering at the expense of vulnerable children so that their allies can seize control of the district and continue down the same path of abject failure.
100%.
Who will pay the price for all of this? The over 6,500 students who attend Pen Ridge, their families and taxpayers throughout the district.
Yep.
On Friday, the Bucks County Court of Common Pleas ruled that Pen Ridge effectuated a cover-up where district staff intentionally manipulated records to hide a direct violation of the First Amendment of the Constitution. This is a complete disgrace.
I agree.
The board and their allies have plenty of time to wage a culture war, to break the law, and accost taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars to line the pockets of Mr. Miller and Edward Siemens. We desperately need change. If we decide to continue down this path on November 7, there will be another massive wave of resignations of our staff. Educational outcomes will continue to collapse. Taxpayers will pay the price, and our students will continue to suffer. The community has an important decision to make. Do you want more of the same? Or to turn a new page? I urge our community to vote wisely on November 7. All of our children are watching.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Benson.
Absolutely. I mean, this is what Kevin Foster just said there. There you go. In a nutshell, I'm glad he's the first speaker laying it all out. The School District has kind of misspent money, has basically, for policies that are purely political. Tonight, they're going to pass some kind of anti-trans measure, I'm sure, which about those girls in sports thing, which is purely a culture war thing for a problem that doesn't exist. And it's all going to be like on the backs of Pen Ridge taxpayers, right? So that's what we're going to, that's, that's what we're doing here. That's what we're doing here. And what Kevin said there too, as well, is absolutely true. The School District has lost a ton of faculty members, tons of teachers. As a matter of fact, they forced several of those teachers to stay into the middle of this kind of fall, kind of beginning of the school year, to fulfill out the, you know, this clause in their contract, because they're basically all left. They all left for other jobs. But Pen Ridge School District, because they were shedding teachers to such a degree, forced them to stay, right, just to kind of pretend that they were getting off to a normal school year, which they were not. But no, those teachers, now they can only hold them so long, because that's what their contract says. And now those teachers are starting to kind of disappear as our principals, as our administrators, as our staff. And just like Kevin Foster just said, that it's only going to hurt our students and our community. And it's, the bill is going to be footed by taxpayers, that those people, those Republicans on the school board, again, they're all Republicans, all of those Republicans on the school board pretend to care about the taxpayer, right? They don't want to, want fiscal responsibility. Meanwhile, they're breaking the law and racking up law firm, law fees, or, yeah, law firm fees to pay for their, like, just incompetence and illegal activities. I mean, here we go. Here we go. Adam Benzig kind of coming up here. I'm going to unmute this.
Adam Benzig, East Rock Hill. I wanted to just talk about the, I wanted to talk about the waste of taxpayer dollars on the legal fees. And I just wanted to kind of jump ahead because I'm sure what we're going to hear coming is that, I believe, previously, the lawsuit that a lot of the legal fees went to was called frivolous, I believe. And just want to stress why, why transparency is important. It does, when you try and hide, when you try and hide stuff like this, I'm sure there's more, it does lead to distractions, it leads to the, leads to just bad governance of the school board. And, yeah, based on what I wanted to say, was sorry. But it is, it isn't a frivolous lawsuit. It wasn't pointless. It is important to know what you guys are doing up there, what, what's going on in our school board. And I appreciate it that Darren followed it through. And I am sad to see, I'm sad to see that it happened. In the first place, it was nice that the workings of our school board did come to light. Because, yeah.
Yeah, let me kind of follow up on this, because if this is exactly it, right? What Adam is saying there, right? It wasn't a frivolous lawsuit. They called it a frivolous lawsuit. How do we know it's not a frivolous lawsuit? Because they won. Darren won the lawsuit, right? Showing that the School District had violated the law. And basically, because they don't want to be transparent on kind of what they're, what they're going to do, right? And so here we go. So now we have the expenditure of money and so on. We lost people. We're, you're spending all this money. And, but just like he said there, before I kind of, before I muted it, right there, he said that the one good thing to come out of this, right, despite that we had to go through all this, is that their practices are now kind of been shown to the public, right? It's been shown, right, with facts. And the judge admonished them, admonished the school board in terms of what they have done. Okay, next speaker up. Here we go.
Stephanie Regina, East Rock Hill. First of all, even though nothing anyone might say tonight is going to change your vote on sports policy, I have to express how disgusted I am by the time and money that you continue to waste, the issues you continue to ignore, and the students you harm through your stupid obsession with gender policies. I'd like to believe that even some people, even if some people are uncomfortable with the pride community, most humans would still agree that, A, schools should shake policies around acceptance and respect for all students, and B, each other policies that satisfy the law the way they are should never take precedence over more serious issues like, oh, I don't know, in English class, wondering how many subs they'll have, before they have a real teacher again, or high needs kids having no case manager, because like five in one school, even one school have quit, elementary kids asking their parents if they have a real principal yet, bus driver shortages, money flying out the window every which direction for the stupidest things. But obviously, the non-binary kid who might want to play a sport has to pee now and then is a much bigger problem. The biggest part of this is that you created this so-called problem in order to provide an easy political platform for your allies. Protect Pen Ridge from whom exactly? If one were to fill in the rest of your friends' slogans, it would read, protect Pen Ridge from trans kids, protect Pen Ridge from non-binary kids. In reality, the only effect of your gender policies is to send a message that will never protect our vulnerable LGBTQ kids, but rather make sure that they know their place, or more specifically, what isn't their place. And you've created enough non-places for them that a trans or non-binary kid can't get through a school day without spending some part of it in a weird libbo state of belonging literally nowhere. Maybe instead, you and your candidates, candidate allies, should be discussing classrooms that don't have consistent teaching assistance because they're being used as personal care assistants, for which they have no training, just like building substitutes being pulled for the same thing. Or maybe they should discuss the problem of gross financial waste on unwanted consultants and pathetic book ban lawsuits. But no, their innately vague, fear-mongering messages are about protection from some of the very kids that need your help and respect the most, and just to distract voters from the real problems that are pushing our teachers out and leaving our kids wondering what's going to happen to their educations. Pen Ridge's problems are unnecessary and fixable, but you won't fix it, and your protect Pen Ridge friends won't fix it. They'll just keep using a group of vulnerable kids to hide from all the intense damage you've already done, and that your protect Pen Ridge friends will continue to do. By the way, vote for Pen Ridge Community Alliance by November 7.
That's Stephanie Regina, and she's basically kind of laying it all out right there, is that, and I think that was so well put, is that they're, they're putting forward at the last minute, right, ahead of the election, this like anti-trans kid school board policy that would say prevent, you know, trans kids from playing, or they must kind of play in the sports assigned to their birth, right? Their, their biological birth, right, whether they were designed, they're designated as birth. And then they would have to show their birth certificates, would have to prove whether they're kind of male or female, right? All that kind of stuff, right? And there's been no problem that, there hasn't been an issue with this in the Pen Ridge School, School District. But they're putting this policy together just so that these candidates, these Republican candidates that are running for school board, right, can go up here and applaud the board and say, great job, this is what we need to do, to give them to something to run on, because they've got nothing to run on. What they've done is they've sent us into like freefall as a school district. Right? They've basically, because they're enacting this Moms for Liberty-backed political agenda, what we get in the community, right, is the bill. Right? That's the irony of the whole thing, right? We got to pay for their abuse of power. I mean, it's incredible. All right, here we have another, Brandon Merkel Gump is one of the candidates, the Democratic candidates for school board. Although I have to say, like, they're, you know, they, they're running under the Pen Ridge Community Alliance, right? Because they have not been saying like, we're Democrats, therefore, vote for us. They basically say, look, we're the sane people here. Right? And you have even one of the board, Rod Wertz, right, who was a Republican, ran with some of the crazies on the board, and basically has, has basically said, I can't be associated with these people anymore. And now he's running on the Democratic Party ticket because, you know, he's a lifelong Republican, and now he's running on the other ticket because he recognizes that this, you know, even if you're a lifelong Republican, you consider yourself a fiscal conservative, or whatever it might be, you look at the school board, this is not the fiscal conservative Republican Party or something like, this is not like your granddad's Republican Party. These are extremists. These are Christian nationalists who are running our school board. Right? I mean, I mean, when you're voting here, right, this is not Republicans as Democrats. This is kind of like, you know, the community versus the extremists, right? Vote for the, you know, this is why you got to vote for Chris Kaufman, this was, you know, Leah Foster Rash, you got to write, you know, Merkel Gumps, Sharino, and Wertz, that's who you got to vote for. If you're in the Pen Ridge School District. Bradley Merkel Gump is going to, going to talk right now. You see, I'm sorry, I kind of cut it off a little bit. So here we go. Here is his, what he's got to say.
Good evening, and go Phils. I'm here to speak again tonight on the disheartening continued attrition of our teachers, administrators, and staff. Since the devastating loss of over 60 teachers this summer, including nearly half the professional staff of one of our elementary schools, not a single month has gone by.
Did you get that? More than half of the professional staff at one of the elementary schools is gone. That is long-term effects on kids. You don't get that time back. Okay?
...without more staff fleeing the treatment they are receiving here at Pen Ridge. Single month has gone by without more staff fleeing the treatment they are receiving here at Pen Ridge. As a profession, teachers are interesting. We don't hop around a lot. We don't look for career advancement. Instead, we tend to find a place, build community, build positive relationships with families in the schools, and stay there. Takes a lot to get a teacher to disrupt that community building and that comfort that they create, because they've had enough, and they leave. While our children are losing out to the laws of respected and loved members of their school communities, the board has continued to ignore, distract from, and attempted to invalidate concerns about this issue. I recognize that many teachers in areas across the United States are leaving the profession. But Pen Ridge's losses are significantly higher than other districts in this area that are comparable in our size and across the state. See, teachers, administrators, sports staff, we love our profession. There are huge jobs more fulfilling than education, despite its many frustrations. It's never the job that people leave. People, and especially teachers, they leave bad bosses.
Yep, exactly.
And this board has been the best, the worst boss of them all. You have left your staff feeling vilified, disrespected, and unsupported, all while micromanaging them and cutting them out of key decisions where their input is needed. Your teachers, administration, and staff do not feel they can come to the board with key issues in our schools and speak freely without fear of retaliation against them. As a result, the teachers are fleeing, and our children are losing. I know it's not fun. I know it won't get you lots of attention and make big splashes to fix this type of an issue. But the focus needs to be back where it belongs, on our children and their education. Please, start doing right by our children and fixing the relationships you have damaged with our professional staff. That firing for millions would go a long way. Thanks. Have a lovely evening, and go Phils.
There you go. Bradley Merkel Gump, one of the school board candidates, running on Pen Ridge Community Alliance, the Democratic Party ticket. Definitely, definitely check him out. By the way, the Phillies are behind five to one in the mid-seventh. Okay, this is, hold on a second. Here we go. Next up.
Talk about your anti-trans sports policy.
Sorry. Here you go.
Laura Foster, East Rock Hill, we talk about your anti-trans sports policy. There's no expectation that the school board will follow the law. There's no expectation of them doing right by our queer students. The expectation is that our board will continue to follow a Moms for Liberty agenda and disregard the voices of our students, our parents, and the voices of our community. You may remember our little Moms for Liberty conference in our backyard, where our favorite Fox, Mr. Adams starred. A major theme of the conference, raised repeatedly by speakers, was denying transgender identity. Moms for Liberty has stated that being transgender is, quote, "one of the most dangerous threats facing children in America today." Based on what? Based on what facts? It can be, because the fact is that one in four queer teens attempt suicide, and half of queer teens consider suicide. Research shows adults using a trans youth's authentic name and pronouns improves mental health and reduces suicide.
Exactly.
Thirty-six percent of queer youth reported being physically threatened or harmed due to their sexual orientation or gender identity. I can say for a fact that this number is accurate, if not higher, in Pen Ridge. The only kids who are truly impacted by your biased policies are the trans kids. Has any one of you even bothered just asked one trans kid in this school what it is like for them to be trans here? Any one of you? Megan, stare affirmatively at your phone if the answer is no. What do you need to happen in this school to see that you are the ones that are putting trans kids at risk? Over and over, this board has been asked to revise any shred of evidence-based research to back their anti-queer, anti-trans policies. They can't do it. The reason is because there is none. What there is, is an extremist Moms for Liberty agenda. And whether they want to admit it or not, there are at least four board members up there who have documented ties to Moms for Liberty, and one who is endorsed by Moms for Liberty for the upcoming elections. There's nothing safe for hate that lives in Moms for Liberty, and those that would openly suggest and vote for policies to force children to out themselves. Listen to the world-renowned neuroscientist, Abhajit Nazkar. Love has no gender. Compassion has no religion. Character has no race. Being homosexual is no more abnormal than being left-handed. Either you are homophobic or you're human. You cannot be both. The power of love is that it sees all people. Show some love for our students.
Nice. That's it. And you know, this is a shame that we got to be talking about these anti-trans policy here, especially when it's not even been an issue, when our school board is being kind of decimated by these people. It's pretty incredible. Let's see who we got up next here. My guess is that we're not going to have quite as long. Here we go.
Jane Kramer, Sellersville. In light of the recent court ruling by Judge Jaeger in the open records case against Pen Ridge School District, I encourage the board to vote no on the Siler Elementary reading, reading log under obsolete items on the facilities agenda. I also encourage the board to take another look at Policy 109. The current process isn't transparent and does not provide students or parents opportunities to challenge books that are removed. The categories for removal on the reading log aren't very clear, but adding them was the first step in making this process more open and transparent to parents and students. Of course, you can look at other options. A school district in New York County found a compromise in addressing concerns about sexual content in books by developing a rating system. Could this be an option for Pen Ridge? I remember there was discussion about this option when Policy 109 was initially rushed through. I guess rating systems isn't a Moms for Liberty playbook item, so we can't do that one. Let's kind of slow down and come up with some creative solutions. I also encourage the board to vote no on the sex-based distinctions in athletics policy, because focusing on national culture war politics when our schools are facing real challenges is just cringey. Thank you.
And by, by the way, there's a TikTok account, it's called Cringey the Ram, that is doing awesome. It's called Cringy the Ram that is doing awesome political satire. Got to check it out. So here you go.
Jim York, East Rockville Township. I'd like to take a minute to welcome Mr. Berrios to the Penrich community. I understand that he lives in our community already, but now you're officially joined our school district. So thank you for your decision to do that. And I look forward to a future at Penrich where we can continue to lead the way in our state protecting education.
Are you ready?
Protecting students.
Republican candidates.
Protecting parental rights. Correct? And protecting our taxpayers, just as our current board will.
All right, I'm going to pause this for a second because what you're hearing right now, this is like the perfect example. This is what Kevin Foster said right at the beginning of the night tonight. Is that you're going to get these Republican candidates come up here, congratulate the board and give their political speeches, right? And try to basically say the other, you know, put on a face for it, you know? Who they're performing this for is completely unclear since, you know, except for this kind of YouTube, YouTube audience, right? To try to make themselves sound like that they are, you know, like the rational, reasonable people, but they're not. The policies that, policies that they support are the policies of destruction. All right, so here, I'll go, I'll go back and just so you understand who this guy is.
Protecting parental rights. Correct? And protecting our taxpayers, just as our current board will do tonight as they hopefully will pass the sex-based sports policy. I believe in a future where truth and transparency will win the day, where these attributes are led by people who live and contribute right here in our own community.
Like not.
Hired, hired by a political party to develop campaign unity, where these attributes are led by people who.
All right, this is, this is, this is hilarious, right? This is hilarious because you got people in here who are even on the school board, don't even send their kids to this district. Right? We don't work in this district. And then you've got the kind of people who work in this district and are, are kind of coming out here supporting the parents in here. And this guy is pretending that all those parents that have been there for the past two years at the school board meetings are somehow outside agitators. This is unbelievable. Unbelievable. How these people can stand there with a straight face. Right? Meanwhile, the money that has been pouring in from people like Paul Martino, Moms for Liberty, all the support that they're showing, all the kind of resources that they provided for this school board, both in free legal, like legal advice, playbooks, all the other kinds of stuff. This guy's going to pretend that because there's like a firm that was hired so that they could develop a couple of advertisements, that that's somehow, oh my God, outside agitators. It's un, it's unreal. I mean, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for a little upset about this, but this guy is like sitting here and freaking lying to people, pretending that he's living in some world that the rest of us are not, pretending that we're supposed to live in his world. I'll let him have his time.
As they hopefully will pass the sex-based sports policy.
Culture war did.
I believe in a future where truth and transparency will win the day, where these attributes are led.
Just like that lawsuit where it showed that that board that you're congratulating lied and deceived the public, went around behind people's backs in back rooms under the cover of night to ban books, to circumvent laws? That, that's the kind of transparency you're supporting? Okay.
Led by people who live and contribute right here in our own community. Not by some outsider hired by a political party to develop campaign platforms that are tricky and sound good and look good, just to have many of these same people that are close to the campaign turn around and create smear campaigns, degrading other candidates with their lies. The same group pledging that they will represent the entire community again while their supporters knowingly create TikTok memes that degrade opponents for believing and leaving and some of the very things that the vast majority of our community.
Oh, like Christian nationalism? Like pseudo fascism? That's what you're talking about? Because that's the one I was just talking about. TikTok memes, right? With what? Kind of showing us who these people are. And this guy wants to say, oh, though the majority of our community are all these kind of right wing extremists. We all believe the same thing. No, you don't, buddy. You are on the outside.
Have been asking for. If these lies are the change you're offering, then no, thank you. With Mr. Berrios as our new superintendent, I'm confident for a future of Penrich where he and the new board leadership is strong enough to lead the way with humility and self-control, where community members will not feel it necessary to result, to degrade to threats of violence and have to be let out of meetings or display inappropriate hand gestures to the audience. In real leadership, this type of behavior has no home. Whether it is inspired or condoned, this type of behavior only leads in one direction. Finally, I'm looking forward to a future of Penrich where leadership sets the example of meeting students and administration where they are, whatever their belief system is, and treats them with kindness as it is this kindness that leads to change and growth. And these are the attributes as a foundation of.
I can't even listen to what those guys are going to say. These are the people. This guy is supporting the policies of the board that stripped away the ability of teachers to basically create welcoming environments for LGBTQ kids. Have basically had racist policies that had wanted to enforce their perspective on every other family in the district. And he's sitting here talking about kindness. It's, it's like, this is the kindest stuff. If you've been watching the show for a long time, this is the kindest stuff that makes me at times feel like, am I like, am I, am I misunderstanding things? Because what I'm experiencing, like on my, in my daily life, what my kids are coming home telling me what's happening at their school, the teachers that are fleeing the district, the rankings of Penridge dropping, them ranking up, like racking up legal fees to kind of, because they've been, they've, they've resorted to illegal activity. And they've lied to us. Jordan Blomgren goes up on stage and starts reading sexually explicit passages on a YouTube stream. And then this guy goes up there and he pretends that it's all the people that are trying to stop it. It's basically, you know, we, we've, we've had this show, we've talked about kind of demagoguery on this show before, right? I, I'm, I'm, I'm upset at this moment because, and I'm not remembering from Patricia. I can't remember her last name now, and it's just driving me crazy. But we had her on, we talked about her book, Demagoguery and Democracy. And one of the things in that book, which she, what she lays out is the history of demagoguery is one in which those, those who are committed to anti-democratic forms, demagogic neo-fascist authoritarian forms, they will always position themselves as the victim and blame the other side for doing what they themselves are doing. Because they, their world, they, they assume that because they are acting in this way to suppress other people, to silence people, to ban books, to treat other people like they're cogs in their Christian nationalist machine. Because they act that way and they want to suppress everyone else. They assume that everyone else is doing it to them too. It, it, it's astonishing. I, I'm sorry, I, I really, I, I, I don't know how far I'm going to get through this tonight because this is, um, this is remarkable. Who do we have here now? Let's see.
These Hilltown Township. I also want to congratulate and welcome Mr. Berrios. I hope to have the privilege of working with you.
This is another Republican candidate. Hold on, I'm going to get her name here.
Barbara V's Hilltown Township. I also want to congratulate and welcome Mr. Berrios. I hope to have the privilege of working with you in the very near future. I also want to thank the board for revising Policy 123.3. Protecting our female athletes is.
All right, I'm not going to even, I'm not going to even kind of go through this again. I mean, I should not have let that, that, that one guy kind of keep on going on, right? You want to watch what these people have to say? You go right to the stream, right? It's there for everybody to see. That doesn't mean I need to let their nonsense stream on my channel, right? Is that they are, I mean, it's like, I mean, I'm so glad Kevin Foster signed up first to speak because he laid it out right there, right? What you're going to hear is you're going to hear these Republican candidates come up, congratulate the board and pretend that they're solving this problem so that they can erase the fact that they are associated with a party that has gone so far off the rails, that has misspent taxpayer monies, that has sent our kids down in like, and, you know, who knows what kind of path this is? Where they're, they're in schools that are in complete disarray. Let's see who we got up next here. It's incredible to me. It's incredible to me. It's incredible to me. You know, I thought that we were going to be able to kind of like, you know, hear some things and point out, but this is, this is infuriating. Here we go.
Hello. I recently had the opportunity to talk to a recent graduate from Penrich. And besides what I'm, you know, the gist that I'm getting of there kind of being a general war on LGBTQ kids, there's also a war on general rainbows. I heard from this person that a, one of her favorite teachers had to take down a lot of inspirational posters just because they had rainbows on them.
Yep.
But I wanted to talk a little bit about the history of book bans. Throughout history, the Bible has been banned in different countries and different versions of it in the United States. Shakespeare has been banned. The Nazis banned F. God Fitzgerald, Ernest Hemingway, Jack London, among others. I was glad to hear that the kids here are reading The Call of the Wild. But maybe if Jack London is a banned book type author, there could possibly be some mating of wild animals in that book that would be offensive. The unconstitutionality of book bans, when censorship is involved, when a government censors, it's unconstitutional. And public schools, our, they are government.
Yeah, they're a Republican institution.
People and kids in general are uplifted by knowledge. And ignorance is a darkness that kid, that cuts kids and people off from reality and leaves them feeling clueless if they are given any little glimpse of light that may shine through. And being that this school is not completely isolated, insular from the outside world, chinks of light are going to shine through. You can't build a moat around yourself. Growth happens. And an author will tell you that a banned book is a goldmine. They're instant bestsellers. Today's banned books are tomorrow's required reading. Get with the times.
Yeah, you know, this reminds me of, you know, Miss makes a good point there about, you know, you're not isolated. I'm reminding the M. Night Shyamalan's, Shyamalan's book, movie, The Village, where if you haven't seen it, go see it and then think of Penrich. And the fact that it was filmed in Bucks County, and he's from Bucks County or Pennsylvania at least, that it's all the more fitting that we should be seeing these book bans in, in Bucks County right now. It's, it's unbelievable. Here we go. Oh, okay, so I'm going to, all right, so this guy, I want to be good. This is guy's name is Josh Hogan, who's speaking right now. Josh Hogan was the kind of anti-maxer COVID denying, reopen Bucks guy who had all this extremist stuff all over his website. He's well-known in those circles. I'm going to give him a little bit of a, you know, again, he's very good about coming to these things every once in a while and coming up and speaking and making himself sound very rational. But if you, you know, you scratch the surface, this is what this guy is. These are people that are trying to launder their reputations ahead of the election through the doing this. So we'll take a little bit what Josh Hogan's got to say. Oops, I'm sorry, here. Let me go back just a tad. I didn't take the mute off. Just leave him muted. Oh boy, here he comes.
Thanks, Josh Hogan, West Rockville Township. First of all, definitely congratulations to Mr. Berrios and to the board for the official commencement of his service here. I'm looking forward to all the great things that are going to be done. As properly predicted by Mr. Foster, I am going to express support for the sex-based distinctions in athletics policy that you're passing tonight. Trying to just come up here and very generically offer up my support. And based on what I'm hearing, I feel the need to remind the community that all of last academic year, all, all except for about a month of the academic year, we had a pretty dangerous situation in the high school bathrooms. I personally spoke to girls who trained themselves to just not go to the bathroom, fall through.
Okay, this is just, I, again, I cannot allow just like disinformation and lies to be kind of like offered as if it's true. We had a dangerous situation in the bathrooms. That was not true. You had right wing extremist parents telling their kids that trans, like, like trans girls were going to come there and they were going to kind of attack them and sexually assault them. Right? This was a completely 100% fabricated national agenda from like not Moms for Liberty and the far right that they were bringing into our school district to ramp up this kind of culture war in order to take power and transform the Penridge Public School District into a little bastion of their village, right? Their Christian nationalist bastion. That is why they hired Jordan Adams from Hillsdale College to come in and revamp the curriculum. This is part of their playbook. So when this guy comes out, this is why, I mean, you cannot allow somebody to come on and just absolutely say lies like this. I mean, this is incredible to me. And he is running for school board, folks. This is the Republican who is running for school board. One of the Republicans, you've heard three of them now, pieces of them. And yes, I have cut them off because they've lied.
Leah Rash, Hilltown Township. I'm talking about the sports policy.
Go back here, sorry. This is Leah Rash. She is also running for school board. She's running for Penridge Community Alliance. She's a Democrat.
Leah Rash, Hilltown Township. I'm talking about the sports policy. My love for athletics started by playing constantly with my older brother. I never won ever. There were some injuries, but I never lost trust in him. It was always fun and we always replayed again. I just loved playing sports. Our sport of choice in our family was soccer. And I excelled at it, I think largely because of all the time I spent playing with my brother. It was always a game, but you never gave up and you kept playing hard. I started running track and boys as their own. When I started playing soccer, I was on a girls' team at Deep Red at the time. It was separated the whole time. The first time I competed with boys was at Penridge Middle School track because there was not a girls' team. We even only counted if we missed. And I was fast, but by middle school, definitely not fast enough to beat the fastest boys. It's really frustrating. You line up for the 800, you'd be the complete outside lane or the second row. Girls sprinters were usually the third or fourth heat and no one's equalizing. There was also no girls' soccer team, but we finally got one when I was in high school. During that time, the coaches decided who, because a lot of those soccer players were on track, who would stay track, who would run soccer. It was decided for us. I wasn't happy, but I didn't mind because I had plenty of other soccer teams I was still playing on. When I went to college, there was no soccer team again at the Washington University. So I thought my career was over and was playing coed, flag football and soccer. I honestly, I hated it. I got bones broken. I was hurt all the time. I didn't enjoy it. We finally got a girls' soccer team again, senior year, and were able to compete and it was amazing. But don't pretend you're doing this policy for girls' sports.
Exactly.
You're talking about daughters of the generations of the mothers who fought for sports, fought for scholarships, fought for a place at the table. And equal prize money and all those things. We were told that we were taking money from the boys' teams, that there wasn't transportation, equipment, coaches. We'd ruin the fields, that there were two teams playing at the same time, the whole set of reasons, just different beacon, to now run another group of kids through the same things that we had to go through. Thank you.
Yeah, there you go, right there. And let's, let's be clear that these are, you know, these people who are getting up there and saying that we're protecting girls' sports are the same people from the same families, from the same traditions that were just what she said, Leah Foster Rash just said, right? They were from the same backgrounds from, of those who, uh, were trying to suppress, um, any girls' sports. We see what's going on now.
Mr. Barrios, I'm looking forward to you joining the team and bringing in your perspective from your many successful years in Abington. I know you'll be bringing in your can-do attitude.
Okay, so this is a guy, he's just the, the chair of the board. This is the only time he speaks, right? When he, he's given some pre, like, written thing to say, he's been, he's never spoken, even though he's been directly asked by the public, um, to come on and speak to you, uh, what his position is and stuff. He doesn't do it. The dude next to him too as well. These two kind of right in the middle here, they don't do anything. So now they're gonna go out and they're gonna, you know, talk a little bit about, uh, how great this guy is and so on, um, what goes on. Uh, this is all gonna be kind of whitewashing of, uh, what's happening. Um, I want to hear something for a second.
There's so many student successes being shared with our community through social media, email communications in our district.
Yeah, look, and see, here's the thing, right? What this, we gotta understand, and I was just having a conversation with some people about this earlier on today. The teachers are phenomenal. Right? I, I mean, I, 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 I am, I have watched, look, I, my kids had an awesome elementary school here in Penridge, right? It was just, it was an awesome experience, an amazing administration, all this kind of stuff, right? Teachers were fantastic. And as they've gone up now, middle school and into high school, right? I have to say, I think it's fairly unusual. Hold on, let me check this out.
I'm gonna first start with, um, just talking about how we
Okay, this is, we're not gonna, listen, this is all the kind of glory reporting stuff. When they first start, I mean, I think it's unusual, or at least my experience always was, is that to, for kids to like school more as they did more schooling. Right? I mean, I, I've watched these teachers in the midst of a board which is basically assaulting the work that they do, disrespecting everything about them. I've seen them do just absolute bang-up jobs. And, and it's shown with, 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 with my kids, right? Wanting to be more involved, being happier in school, learning more. Right? And now they're, they're taking away the curriculum that was built by those teachers and forcing the teachers to deliver something which the teachers themselves know is wrong. I, I, I just, I, I don't know, beside myself a little bit here. So there we have it. We have a couple, uh, you know, there's, there's a second comment period that'll happen toward the, um, the latter half of the, um, of the meeting. Um, who knows how long it's gonna be? My, my bet is gonna be, it's gonna be a, a shorter, uh, meeting tonight because of the Phillies game, even though the Phillies are now, uh, did they officially lose yet? Oh, no, not yet. It's the, uh, bottom of the eighth inning and it's five to one Diamondbacks. So just to, just for those of you who are, uh, wondering. I mean, I don't know what you all think. I mean, this election on November 8th is absolutely critical. Right? Um, and it's got me thinking a lot about what comes next. You know, I was out, I was out, um, coming back from grocery shopping on, uh, Sunday, I guess. In the morning, I was out on Saturday too, but it was on, on Sunday morning, and I'm driving back and I see two people separately, different locations, just on my drive back from the Penridge Community Alliance out there knocking doors. And there, that group of folks, the organization they've built and they've gone and supported these candidates, to have candidates that are just like tireless. I mean, I don't know how they do it, to be honest with you. I don't know how they do it. I mean, I could barely keep awake some, like, a lot of these days. And these folks are just the hope of our community. And I know this is not just Penridge. This is also happening in Central Bucks. This is also happening in Palisades, right? I had a colleague of mine who's from Palisades area, who was going to the school board meeting up in Palisades because the extremism is steeping in up there. Started to get reports and emails from people up in Quakertown. About things that are happening there. And then soured it, right? One after the other. These people will not stop. And these people are in it for the long haul. And this is what, you know, I, I mean, I don't want to give too much away, but, uh, I think I would strongly recommend if you, if you are not a regular listener of The Signal from Bucks County Beacon, uh, listen to Wednesday's show. Listen all the way through. Because it's, it's sobering, right? But it's focusing. And it's just a great interview too as well. So. Anyway, so that's gonna, I think we'll tie it up there because I had a bunch of stuff. I, I started the day out, um, yeah. I don't want to close on just a completely down note, you know? Um, we've got like, uh, I mean, look, I mean, today's the 23rd, tomorrow's the 24th, two weeks from tomorrow is election day. Right? And I'm the judge of elections at my polling place, so I'm gonna be there all day. And I know there's gonna be people outside that are gonna be urging people to go out and vote, but I it comes down to this, you know, I mean, for all the times I can be cynical about electoral politics, right? I mean, especially on the national level. The national level, it's just, it's kind of like a, it can get disgusting at times, right? But this is where it matters, you know? And, you know, school boards' elections have historically low turnout. But the people who, you know, who have been organized and mobilized for decades, you know, who've been building their organizations now control our school board. See what that, see what that does. We're watching slow-moving destruction of a democratic culture. And, you know, and I don't, I don't mean Democrat as a Democratic Party, I mean democratic culture. Where you know, there's different, there's different understandings of democracy, right? And Jordan Blomgren, for example, you know, the kind of most outspoken of the book banners and the Moms for Liberty like adherence. Oh God, what is this? I gotta, okay, that's something else. Labor law question. Um, anyways, um, Jordan Blomgren, you know, one of these kind of, the biggest book banners, her understanding and her version of democracy is one that the community or the people who showed up to vote on election day voted for us, therefore we get to do what we want because they elected us. And we told everybody we were gonna be extreme and they elected us. Right? And that is a version of democracy, which is a very warped version of democracy, right? Because basically what it, what it suggests is that it's pure power politics. It's just about whoever gets elected, gets the most votes on that particular day, gets to dictate their agenda and gets to subject the community to their will. Right? And this has been, look, this has grown, this has been Republican Party politics for quite some time. But over the last five years, it's gotten more than that, even more than five years, but it's gotten more and more extreme, right? To the point where the only thing that matters is getting elected. They will suppress the vote, they will lie, they have dark money that will come in, they'll have millionaires that will come in and dump money on little school board elections. So they can dictate their agenda on the rest of the policy, the rest of the community. And Jordan Blomgren has said this, "You elected us, therefore we get to do what we're gonna do. We said we're gonna do this, now we're doing it." What that ignores, of course, is that majority of people who voted on election day does not mean everyone, number one. And in a democratic culture, even if you, if, when you win, you have some sort of investment in listening to the entire community. Because you believe that you can represent this community, and you might not agree with everybody, right? But at the very least, the community matters. Everybody matters. Especially in school board elections, when they know as well as I do, as well as you do, that if you crack 20% voter turnout for a school board election, that's a floodgate. That's a, shoot, that's a landslide of people came out to vote. And yes, that is a pathetic indictment of American democracy, 100%. And, but if we had a strong democratic culture at its roots, even those folks that we might disagree with would recognize that fact. They would recognize, okay, 20% of the people came out to vote. I won 51% of the vote. That means I won by a tiny percentage of the actual people in my community. I have a duty to take care of the community and make sure that I understand really what they want. Doesn't mean you're gonna agree with everybody, but at its very core of that. And with a school, it's just like a microcosm, right? Is you're not there to only represent those kids who are being raised to be Christian nationalists like you. You're there for all those kids because supposedly you have a belief in creating a public education that is accessible to all. At the root of democracy, the whole principle of democracy is it's the best way to manage differences, is that you need diverse opinions and voices in order to make sure that the governed have their will expressed in policy and structure. What the current board does and what the current Republican candidates for school board want is to impose their will on the rest of us. That is authoritarianism. Patricia Roberts Miller, I'm not as rank, rank, Patricia Roberts Miller was the woman who I spoke before. We spoke on this, I had her on the show, talking about democracy and demagoguery. And demagoguery and authoritarianism is always, this is one of the Achilles heels, if you will, of democracy. Is that is, it is one of its weaknesses is that it can be, people can be manipulated. Or people can give up. People cannot participate. And the persuasive clown clowns come out and sell their snake oil, get people riled up, get them convinced and then vote for them and then they can enact their will and pass policies that will ensure that they stay in power. I mean, it's it's nuts. And what kills me is that these folks really don't care about our kids. They care about the idea of kids in their brains. They think about what their Christian nationalist agenda should look like. They want to control kids to think only one thing. They do not want to cultivate creativity and critical thinking among our children. So here it is, everybody. November 7th. Get out and vote. Get out and vote. You see me, say hi? Get out and vote. All right, that's gonna do it for me tonight. Um, I've gotta help my daughter with her homework. Um, and I don't really have to help her with it, but she wants me to kind of read through some things with her, right? Uh, she wants to get my perspective on stuff, right? Which I just love to do that. Um, we were talking about her, uh, what she's writing earlier on, so, um, get back to that. All right, buddy. Um, sorry for all you Phillies fans out there who are, uh, kind of dipping their head in sorrow. Uh, thanks to all those folks, those parents, those community members who showed up at the school board meeting, um, to represent all of us in the community, um, and, uh, for all the work you're doing out there. This is Kevin Mahoney, creator and founder of Raging Chicken. Uh, got lots more coming up for you this week. Um, and, uh, hopefully we're gonna finally get our schedule sorted out for next week, uh, the day before Halloween. So crazy. All right, buddy. Um, this is Kevin Mahoney, creator and founder of Raging Chicken. Um, we're out of here for tonight. Um, good luck for the rest of the week and, uh, keep up the fight, what can I tell you? See ya!